All right, I call this meeting to order. Announcer?
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman? Commissioner Rice?
Here. Let us stand.
All right. Our first and always a monthly favorite. We have the Animal Resource Center here to talk about an adoption promotion. Steve and Candy, would you like to come up?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Steve Garden. I'm the Outreach Coordinator at the Animal Resource Center. This is my friend and coworker Candy Brothers, one of our animal care control officers. Candy has a little dog with us that we're not going to talk about. We're going to pretend it's not here, so we're going to... No, go ahead Candy, tell them about the little puppy we have.
So this is a little baby that we got in on Saturday. And he was found as a stray in Huber Heights. We don't have a name for him yet. I believe Steve is going to have a name picked for him.
We would love it if the Commissioners can come up with a name for him.
Oh.
What?
We have to come up with a name for him?
We have some suggestions. I didn't want to put you completely on the spot, but we said this would be a great idea for the Commissioners to be able to name this little guy. He's going to go up for adoption today at four o'clock.
Okay. I think he won't last long.
I'm thinking that he's going to be out of our building by five.
Because I think there's someone in this room that may rush there. Okay, is it a boy or a girl?
Little boy.
A little boy. I'm thinking the name Michael. Michael's not here.
These are just suggestions, but the names we had suggested were Griswold, Kringle, and Herman, which are all Christmas-themed names, but obviously I've seen my paycheck, so the Commissioners wanted to name something different. They certainly may.
Well, of those three, I would go with Kringle. Yeah. Kringle?
Kringle?
Whoever gets that darling little thing is going to have a cute little name for it anyway, so.
It's to go with those ears.
What kind do you think it is? A mixture, I'm sure, a little chihuahua, maybe?
That's what we think. Yeah, he's a mixture, but we think he's a little chihuahua.
Uh-uh.
He's about three months, I think you said.
Oh, my gosh, darling. So there's still time someone might claim him?
There's a chance. There's a chance.
I can't imagine a little puppy like that, that you wouldn't miss him and worry about him.
Typically, if he was going to be claimed out, he would have been claimed out already.
Yeah.
Especially a little puppy like this, but you never know.
Okay.
You never know. That's why the law allows for up to three days.
Okay. So what, so this is what's all happening with the ARC. Anything special for the rest of the year? I know the licenses. We get the license now through January 31st.
That's correct, Commissioner, yes. This is license season. License season started December the 1st and goes through January the 31st. If you have not yet got your dog license, make sure you contact us or the administration building downstairs. You can get it there, or I think there's over a dozen different outposts you can get. You can mail it in, you can get it online. There's really no excuse not to get your license. Do not wait until the last week of January. There's usually long lines and slowdowns and things like that, so don't wait. Get your license. Get it early, get them off it. Get four or five of them, sure.
All right. How was the adoption at the mall? Didn't you have an adoption at the mall?
We did, Commissioner, yes. We just had our annual adoption event at the Dayton Mall. Our friends from Sixon Humane Society were there as well. A lot of dogs were adopted. We had one of our own that got adopted, and we had two others where we had some interested families who really loved them, but they wanted to think about it over the weekend, which I'm fine with. I actually encourage that, as opposed to some folks doing some impulse buys right there at the mall.
Exactly, right. It's a commitment.
Yeah, so it is a commitment. So it went really well. It went really well.
Oh, is that not cute?
And speaking of adoptions, we are still doing our free adoptions, thanks to the generous donation we got from the Matt Steele Foundation. As of now, we've done 122 adoptions.
Oh, wow.
We have 10 more left, so that may last to the end of the week, it may not.
Okay.
So we typically do nine, 10 in a week, something like that, so it may last to the end of the week or may not. So if you're looking for a Christmas puppy...
So what are your hours?
Our hours...
Given that we have holidays coming up?
Our hours during this week are just the same as they normally are.
Okay.
Not until...
Not Monday?
Not Monday, no. We're closed on Monday, but other than that, the rest of our hours are just normal hours, 10 to 6 during Monday to Friday, and 10 to 4 on Saturday.
Okay. Well, he certainly is cute. He's the poster child. Yeah, exactly. Now, have you got a good picture of that face, that little face of his? Awesome. Good, yeah, we want to make sure that people watching this see it, because Emily, I think, is dying to get him. I think Jerry.
I may have to fight Jerry to get him out of here.
Whatever you say, Jerry.
Well, thank you very much, and please...
If you don't mind, just one more quick announcement. We do want to congratulate former ACCO, but now Field Operations Supervisor Brian Baker, who has replaced Bob Sexton, and that supervisor position. Brian's been with us for over 30 years, and I think he's going to make a wonderful addition to our management team.
Awesome, awesome. Well, please be sure to tell everyone at the ARC that we wish them the best of holidays and that it's been a great 2023, and we're looking forward to even better things in 2024.
So are we. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for all you do every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye, Kringle. All right, and then next, we have a recognition of one of our outstanding citizens, Rap Hankins. I have a proclamation, and how do you want to do this, Rap? Do you want to speak first, or you want me to give the proclamation?
Why don't you read the proclamation?
Okay, all right. Rap is a longstanding pillar of this community. I've known you how many years? Seventeen, 18 years at least?
Twenty, 25 years.
Okay. Both in public service and in activism. We have an actual proclamation here, so I'm reading the contents of that. Rap Hankins has served as a Council Member of Trotwood, Ohio for almost 19 years, including two years he served as Vice Mayor, and Rap currently serves as the President of Drive Electric Dayton, an organization that provides electric car education and advocacy, including training, information, local policy, and connections to members of the community. And in his role as President, he has hosted multiple, and I can attest to that, I've attended many, quite a few of them, not many of them probably, multiple drive electric events, educated city staff at municipal conferences, as well as engaging with elected officials one-on-one, providing immense dedication to his work and community. And whereas Rap Hankins' notable phrase is "EVS for All" does not shy away from the issues of accessibility in electric vehicles and pushes forward in the pursuit of EV infrastructure in all communities, and when we mean all, we mean all communities, truly working to improve the lives of many in the greater Miami Valley. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio, on this, it's 18th, but today's the 19th day of December 2023, does hereby offer congratulations to Rap Hankins for his steadfast dedication to this county. And it is signed by myself, President Deb Lieberman, and fellow Commissioner Judy Dodge.
Thank you. The award that we received from Plug-in America is not an award for me. It's an award for all the people who are members of Drive Electric Dayton, and it's actually an award for the people of Montgomery County. Most people don't realize that there are actually 35,000 electric vehicles in the great state of Ohio, and one of the fastest-growing places in the state of Ohio for EV adoption is Montgomery County. So what we've done this year, we've had 42 events all over Montgomery County this year, and we basically had events for almost 50,000 people in my first year as President, and our goal is to do even better next year. We think the second year is going to be even harder than the first. I would like to see a show of hands of people that own electric vehicles in the room, please. And I'd like that when I come back, we see that number doubling, because what's important about Drive Electric Dayton is we believe in the science of global warming. We know that if we increase the number for citizens in Montgomery County, the health quality of all citizens will increase. And if I have one message, we do believe our motto is EVs for All, but we, if there's a Chamber of Commerce, if there's an Optimist Club, or Rotary Club, or anyone that would like Drive Electric Dayton to show up and bring our cars and educate people about the benefits of EVs, call us. We'd like to show up. And once again, I'd like to thank the Commissioners for your support of putting chargers in at every new facility that you build. And as it relates to policy, the best time to put in a Level 2 charger is new construction. So, and also, we just nominated ODOT because we are the first state to put in the DC charger in the country, and they did that in London, Ohio. So great things are happening in Montgomery County, great things are happening throughout the state of Ohio. We plan to double our efforts, and once again, we want to thank you, but we would ask every elected official in every city council to pass a policy to make sure that if something is built new, that chargers are put in, or at least the infrastructure, and particularly when it comes to apartment dwellings throughout our county, that's where it's the most difficult to charge your chargers, because 80% of people charge at home, as you know, Commissioner, because that's what you do. But people who live in underserved communities don't have that luxury. So we want to make sure that every citizen in Montgomery County and Green County and all over the Miami Valley have the right to charge. So I want to thank you again. I'm always excited to come home and be with family. EV adoption is something that we believe is a matter of health and a matter of economic fairness for all the people in our great county, so thank you again. And when I see you in the future, I hope that we have more people that are driving not in hybrids, but all electric vehicles, so thank you again.
Absolutely, and we want to get a picture with you.
Yes, please.
But we just came from our 2023 Sustainability Luncheon.
We did.
I know you were there.
Yes.
And we were just giving out awards, and this is just one more way where individuals can make a giant step towards, you know, countering climate change and doing, making slow choices.
The most wonderful thing about living, many times, people like to complain that they live in the Montgomery County and they don't understand how wonderful our county is, but I was just in Columbus, and one of the statements that was made was that if global warming gets even hotter or colder or whatever we have, we're going to have numbers of people moving to the Miami Valley, because we have more water than anybody else, and we need to build the infrastructure for the onslaught of citizens that are going to come to our great community. So we need to get ready and have the electrical infrastructure in place, and the people that give us that leadership and guidance are you, so we're counting on you.
Absolutely. And I know Tyler and our whole team. We have a sustainability plan. We updated it. We'll probably talk about it in early 2024 of the progress we've made and where we're headed, so.
So anything that Drive Electric Dayton can do...
You are singing to the choir here.
I know this, and anything we can do to help you as far as putting chargers in, both Level 2 and DC chargers, please count on Drive Electric Dayton. We're here for you.
We appreciate it. Now let's get a picture with you.
Okay.
I think we have a lengthy agenda today for a lot of resolutions. All right, let's get going. And as usual, first up, our County Engineer, Paul Grunoff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator. Ladies and gentlemen, we have three items today. The first is Resolution 23-1671 for the Mad River Road Resurfacing Project in Miami and Washington Townships at an estimated cost of $925,000. This is a federal aid project, which is why it's separate from the rest of them coming up here. 1672 is for the Wenger Road Bridge Reconstruction Project in the City of Clayton at an estimated cost of $400,000. And 1673 is for the 2024 Asphalt Concrete Resurfacing Program countywide at an estimated cost of $2,430,000.
Move to approve. I second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. County Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioner. Under the County Sheriff, we have three resolutions. First one, 1674, extends the price agreement with Aramark Correctional Services, LLC, for detention, food services for the Sheriff's Office and Juvenile Court through January 31st, 2024. The next two authorize purchases, 1675, FARO Technologies, Inc., for forensic scanning equipment in amount not to exceed $18,635 and 0.05. And 1676, M&amp;J Technologies Direct for the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance Contract for Replacement Switches in an amount not to exceed $175,058 and 0.50.
Move to approve. I second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. County Prosecutor?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm half the County Prosecutor, Matt Heck Jr. We have Resolution 23-1677. This is to appropriate the Montgomery County Delinquent Tax and Assessment Collection or Detact Fund as of December 31st, 2023, to the offices of the County Treasurer and Prosecuting Attorney, and approve the 2024 annual appropriation.
Move to approve. I second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab, 1678 authorizes a purchase from Cadre Research Labs, LLC, for Top Match 3D High Capacity Portable Forensic Scanning System, including a standard system support package in amount not to exceed $87,575 through December 18th, 2026.
Move to approve. I second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. County Administrator?
I'm getting the signal to read one of the late items here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioners, okay. Under probate court, I have 1775, authorize an agreement with Catholic Social Services of Miami Valley through Life Essentials for Guardianship Services in an amount not to exceed $500 per ward per year with automatic renewals.
Move to approve. I second. All those in favor say aye? Aye.
Now I could go?
Now County Administrator. I apologize. County Administrator?
Under the County Administrator Clerk of Commission, approve the minutes of the meeting, December 12th, 2023. Resolution 23-1679, approval of bills, list available in the Clerk's office, and 1680, approval of personnel actions, list available in the Clerk's office.
Move to approve. I second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Administrative Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today, we have our hearty holiday edition for Administrative Services. We have many resolutions and one late item, beginning with Resolution 1681. This authorizes a facility rental agreement with Caroline Historical Park for the Business Services Workforce Development Construction Job Fair in an amount not to exceed $2,250. Resolution 1682 authorizes a master service agreement with OpenGov Incorporated for OpenGov's procurement software suite for the purchasing department. Resolution 1683 authorizes a statement of work with OpenGov Incorporated for OpenGov procurement software for the purchasing department in an amount not to exceed $100,000... 100... $102,424 through December 31st of 2024 with an option to renew. The highlight of this is electronic bidding, so very soon in 2024, our contractors and those who would like to submit bids can now do that electronically.
Wow.
So that will be nice, and we expect that'll be easier for contractors, and we hope to encourage additional...
Maybe get more.
Additional bids. That's right, as a result of the ease for the bidders. Resolution 1684 authorize a statement of work with Corn Ferry for alliance program materials and membership for the Human Resources Department in an amount not to exceed $34,500. Resolution 1685 authorize a sole source purchase from Azteca Systems, LLC, for annual software maintenance and support for the server AMS Premium City Works Departmental Enterprise License Agreement for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $128,421 and 28 cents. The following resolutions authorize agreements through December 31st of 2024, beginning with 1686 with clothes that work to provide job readiness, basic skills workshops, in an amount not to exceed $49,500. 1687 is with Dayton Miami Valley AFL-CIO to provide job readiness, basic skills workshops in an amount not to exceed $40,000. Resolution 1688 is with the Dayton Young Black Professionals for Mentoring Services in an amount not to exceed $49,500 with an option to extend. Resolution 1689 is with Ice Miller LLP for consulting services in support of assessing the county's broadband strategy in an amount not to exceed $100,000. Resolution 1690 is with Dr. Amita R. Patel, doing business as the Institute for Psychiatric Education for psychiatric services and consultations for the Stillwater Center in an amount not to exceed $16,536. And Resolution 1691 is with Sixa to provide veterinary services for the Animal Resource Center in an amount not to exceed $3,240. The next set of resolutions authorize price agreements, beginning with 1692 with Matthew Brun Enterprises Incorporated doing business as Champion Landscape Supply for yard waste recycling services for the Environmental Services Department Solid Waste Group through February 28th, 2027 with options to renew. 1693 is with Miami Products and Chemical Company for the 2024 Water Treatment Chemicals for the Environmental Services Department through December 31st of 2024. Resolution 1694 is with RD Holder Oil Company Incorporated for onsite fueling service for the Environmental Services Department through December 31st, 2024, with options to extend. The next set of resolutions renew agreements through December 31st of 2024, beginning with 1695 with Gino Wiltheis for dietitian services at the Stillwater Center in an amount not to exceed $20,400. Resolution 1696 is with Standard Insurance Company for group life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance, supplemental life insurance, and short-term disability insurance. 1697 is with Dr. Michael Pignet Tielo for psychological services and consultations for the Stillwater Center in an amount not to exceed $38,400 with options to extend. Resolution 1698 is with YMCA of Greater Dayton to provide wellness programming services for county employees and their dependents in an amount not to exceed $132,840 with an option to renew. Resolution 1699 is with Kettering Adventist Health, doing business as Kettering Health for biometric screenings for the Human Resources Department in an amount not to exceed $125,000. The next two resolutions amend agreements. The first is Resolution 1700 with Community Insurance Company, doing business as Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield for administration of the self-funded Montgomery County Health Plan and pharmacy benefit manager services by amending Article 14 and increasing the pharmacy cost to $700,000 through December 31st of 2024. And 1701 is with Black &amp; Beach for consultant services for the MCES Environmental Lab by extending the term through March 30th of 2024. The last two resolutions on the regular agenda authorize change orders for the Environmental Services Lab Project by extending the terms through February 28th, 2024. The first is 1702 with Graybach LLC, and the last is 1703 with APG Office Furnishings. The late item is Resolution 1776, and this authorizes an agreement with Optum Financial for ongoing management of the flexible spending accounts, health reimbursement accounts, and Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act insurance for the Human Resources Department.
Move to approve. I second. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Until it's the end of the year. Okay, human service, or no, environmental services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For environmental services, we have Resolution 1704, declare an emergency and authorize the construction of pressure-reducing valve vault and app pertinences at an estimated cost of $150,000. Resolution 1705 amend the agreement with Black &amp; Beach Corp. for the preparation of detailed construction plans and specifications for the Eastern Standby Generator Replacement Project by adding $201,756 to the original amount for a revised total of $925,152 and extending the term through April 30th, 2026. A Resolution 1706, accepting temporary easement deed, approve an agreement for payment of $1 and authorize the auditor to issue a warrant in that amount to Thomas E. Bechtel for construction of the Erosion Control Site 15 Tomahawk Trail and record the same. And Resolution 1707, release 100% of the cash surety and subdividers contract with Trails Partners LLC for the Trails of Saddle Creek Development, Section 10.
Move to approve. I second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. John Parks, OMB.
Thank you.
No, I'll switch when you get over.
OMB has Resolution 1708 to exempt all calendar year 2024 Montgomery County purchases of $1,000 or less from the requirement of ORC 5705.41-D1 that a certificate of the fiscal officer be attached to any contract or order involving expenditure of money as permitted under 5705.41-D2. We have 17...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm trying to bring you up. I'm kidding.
Lot of ORC references there. 1709 authorize an agreement with Maximus Consulting Services, Inc., to develop the central services cost allocation plan in an amount not to exceed $75,000 through June 30th, 2027.
Move to approve. I second that. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And...
I can second now.
Oh, I know, I know. You can take over if you want.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
You're fine. I just want to say I apologize. This is not a good week to be flying, just FYI. It's been a long 24 hours for me, but I am here.
Yay! We're glad.
Yeah.
All right. We have plenty of resolutions to...
Good.
All right, human services.
Thank you, Commissioner. We do have several resolutions to go through today. The first is under Human Services Planning and Development, and it's Resolution 23-1710. It authorizes a price agreement with Dayton Children's Hospital, Kettering Health, Dayton, Washington Township, Miami'sburg, and the main campuses, and Miami Valley Hospital Main, North, and South campuses for medical treatment and services for indigent ill residents in an amount not to exceed $5 million through December 31st of 2024. 1711 is authorizing a consulting agreement with Preschool Promise, Inc., for Montgomery County Preschool Promise Program in an amount not to exceed $20 million through December 31st of 2028, and that's up to $4 million a year. 1712 is authorize a professional service agreement with Preschool Promise for early childhood system building in an amount not to exceed $50,000 through December 31st of 2024. 1713 is authorizing an agreement for the release of funds collected in 2024 to the YWCA Dayton for the operation of shelters for victims of domestic violence in an amount not to exceed all fees collected through January 15th of 2025. 1714 is authorizing a contribution of $94,375 to the Joint Office of Citizen Complaints, aka the Ombudsman, to assist residents with the provision of information referral and investigative services concerning government services and operations through December 31st of 2024. We have two agreements, authorize and consulting services agreements with Sinclair Community College through December 31st of 2024. 1715 for the Fast Forward Center in an amount not to exceed $400,000. 1716, development and coordination of mentoring services in an amount not to exceed $200,000, and that's the Mentoring Collaborative. Authorizing agreements, 1717, Homeful for Coordinated Entry Assessments in an amount not to exceed $173,060 through November 30th of 2024. 1718, United Way of the Greater Dayton Area for Health Link 2-on-1 Services in an amount not to exceed $55,000 through December 31st of 2024. 1719, YWCA Dayton for coordinated entry assessments in an amount not to exceed $175,000 through November 30th of 2024. And then we have 21 agreements to amend to exercise the first option and modify articles through December 31st of 2024. So we have 1720 for Boys and Girls Club of Dayton for the Ready-to-Learn Program for $52,828. 1721, Catholic Social Services Miami Valley for Family Stabilization and Support for $60,000. 1722, Daybreak, Inc., for Transitional Housing Services for $77,728. 1723 for Daybreak, Inc., for Youth Shelter Services for $189,103.63. And Resolution 1724 for Goodwill Easter Sales Miami Valley for Behavioral Supports for 1725 is for Goodwill Easter Sales of Miami Valley for the Miami Valley Works Program for $169,385. 1726 is Legal Aid of Western Ohio for legal assistance for survivors of domestic violence. That's for $50,000. 1727 is Parity, Inc., for Youth Development for Their Success Program is $60,000. is sixty thousand. Seventeen twenty-eight is for Senior Resource Connection for emergency home-delivered meals for the elderly for two hundred and twenty thousand. Seventeen twenty-nine for Senior Resource Connection for home-delivered meals for disabled individuals under sixty for a hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred. Seventeen thirty is for St. Vincent de Paul Social Services, Inc. for housing as case management services for three hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and two dollars and eighty-seven cents. And then St. Vincent de Paul Social Services, Inc. for emergency shelter services for a million three hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Seventeen thirty-two is for the University of Dayton for Echo Family Advocacy Program for a hundred thousand dollars. Seventeen thirty-three is West Care Ohio, Inc. for the Gardening and Nutrition Education Program for sixty-nine thousand. Seventeen thirty-four is West Care Ohio, Inc. for East-North Dayton Senior Outreach for sixty-nine thousand three fifty-six. Resolution seventeen thirty-five is West Care Ohio, Inc. for Miracle Makers for a hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Seventeen thirty-six, West Care Ohio, Inc. for Positive Youth Development for seventy-five thousand. Seventeen thirty-seven, West Care Ohio, Inc. for the East End Neighborhood Job Connections Program for a hundred and fifteen thousand. Seventeen thirty-eight is for the YWCA Dayton for the Domestic Shelter Case Management Services of fifty thousand. Seventeen thirty-nine for the YWCA Dayton for Housing Focus Case Management Services for nineteen thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. Seventeen forty is for the YWCA for Domestic Violence Shelter Services in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. And then, under HSPD, we have a late agenda item, which is twenty-three dash one seven seven seven, seventeen seventy-seven, to amend the agreement with Seabrooks for Easy Impact Flex Plan Services to provide a comprehensive contract management and performance management system for community initiatives by adding forty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars to the original agreement for a revised total of a hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars, and to extend the term through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five. Let me continue? I don't know. Okay. All right. Then, under the Department of Job and Family Services, we have Resolution seventeen forty-one to authorize an agreement with HER Safe Space LLC for substitute care services through March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. Seventeen forty-two is to authorize an inter-agency agreement with BCC-IT to provide IT systems and supports to JFS staff for two million four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Seventeen forty-three is to amend the inter-agency agreement with the Sheriff's Office and Children's Services Division for security services at the Haynes Building by adding seventy thousand to the original amount for a revised total of three hundred and sixty-five thousand three hundred and forty dollars through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three. We have authorization for some agreements through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. Resolution seventeen forty-four, the United Way of the Greater Dayton Area for Freedom Schools Program for fifty thousand. Seventeen forty-five for Close That Works to provide employment and appropriate attire and job interview training services for twenty-two thousand. Seventeen forty-six is for Catholic Social Services of the Miami Valley for supervised visits and exchange services with Irma's House for seventy-three thousand ten dollars. Seventeen forty-seven is Senior Resource Connection for Representative Payee Services for a hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Seventeen forty-eight is for the Area Agency on Aging PSA Two for Comp Care Services for seniors sixty years or older, and older, I should say, for eight million seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. Seventeen forty-nine is the Children Have Options in Caring Environments, Inc. or Choices for Family Preservation and Reunification Services for ninety thousand. Seventeen fifty is Goodwill Easter Sale Miami Valley to provide Ohio Works First Program, and that is, uh-oh, I'm sorry, that one's cut off from my page. And Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program Employment Training or SNAP ENT Services in an amount not to exceed five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And then we have authorizing agreements to establish cooperative procedures for the effective establishment and enforcement of child support obligations for the program through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. Resolution seventeen fifty-one for Juvenile Court Clerk's Division for Clerk of Court Services for five hundred and fifty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Seventeen fifty-two is Juvenile Court for Magistrate Services for three hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Seventeen fifty-three is for the Domestic Relations Court for magistrate services for a million four hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. Then we have authorizing agreements to provide eligibility referral and support services with funding in actual amounts of fifty percent of expenses incurred for salaries, fringe benefits, and other costs through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four, and those are Resolution seventeen fifty-four for Foundation's Health Solutions, and then seventeen fifty-five for Kettering Health Network. We have some options to exercise and modify articles for agreements through December thirty-first through two thousand twenty-four. Seventeen fifty-six is Goodwill Easter Sales Miami Valley for Comprehensive Case Management and Employment Program or the CCMEP Services for a million two hundred thousand dollars. Seventeen fifty-four is Gorkas Counseling and Consulting LLC for Crisis Intervention and Support Services for twenty-four thousand. Seventeen fifty-eight is Legal Process Service Express LLC to provide process server services for the Child Support Enforcement Agency for sixty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty. Seventeen fifty-nine is Prime Two Holdings LLC doing business at Furniture Express for furniture and delivery services not to exceed ninety thousand. Seventeen sixty is United Way of the Greater Dayton Area for their Help Link two-on-one telephone answering services for the Adult Protective Services Unit for six thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars. Seventeen sixty-one is United Way of the Greater Dayton Area for Help Link two-on-one services for the Children's Services Division for two thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Seventeen sixty-two is Valley Transport LLC for non-emergency transportation and broker services for two million nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand and one hundred and twenty-six dollars. Resolution seventeen sixty-three is YWCA Dayton for Emergency Shelter Services for two hundred thousand. And then the last are exercising options and modifying agreements for inter-agency agreements with the Sheriff's Office through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. Seventeen sixty-four is the Children's Services Division for Security Services at the Haynes Building for three hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Seventeen sixty-five is Child Support Enforcement Agency for Security Services for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and six dollars. Seventeen sixty-six is Job and Family Services for Security Services at the Job Center for a hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And then we have a late agenda item, Resolution seventeen seventy-eight, which is authorizing a cooperative agreement with the Clerk of Courts to establish cooperative procedures for the effective establishment and enforcement of child support obligations for the program at a cost not to exceed a hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars eighty-seven cents through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four.
Excellent.
Wow. I meant for approval.
Second, and I just want to say a couple of things. I mean, you look through these, and these are just so critical to our most vulnerable, vulnerable citizens here in Montgomery County. So I know your office has just put a lot of love and staff work into this. It's just so, so critical. Number one, number two, but I have to give a shout out to Ombudsmen. I don't know what we'd do without them. I mean, they are, they work tirelessly for just pennies almost. It's just, and they have volunteers. They just do a fantastic job, so I have to give a shout out to Ombudsmen. So, I think I second it.
I'll add, you know, these are the, I'm sorry, my ears are still popping. I came straight here from Cincinnati Airport. You know, all of our partners on here, they're the ones that are out doing the work. And, because we couldn't do it without them.
Nope.
And we heard a lot of these same organizations last week, but these are all for separate contracts and separate work that they do. One of the things that struck me as far as a significant amount of money was the senior services. And we have, through our partners, you know, we take care, if you look at whether it's young children, our seniors, we are that safety net that I don't think people realize the investment that we make because of the human service levy. And, and some of this comes out beyond the human services levy, clearly, but, you know, just looking at St. Vincent de Paul for homeless, University of Dayton, all the work that West Care is doing, and the YWCA, I mean, they.
Goes on and on.
Goes on and on. And so, Jerry, thank you. Every year we do this at the end of the year, and.
Do you have to approve all of these contracts?
Yeah, so.
We do.
I'll say thank you to him, too. Thank you, Mr. Prosecutor. But, yeah, good, good, good stuff.
I echo that. So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Business Services.
Thank you, Commissioner. Business Services has but one resolution for you today.
You're so funky.
Way to end the year.
Under Community and Economic Development, seventeen sixty-seven, authorizes a grant agreement with Miami Valley Child Development Centers, Inc. for the Early Learning Building Project in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Another wonderful project.
Yeah. I second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Now, is that the, the new building? Do we?
Yeah, we're using ARPA funds for this. I ask citizens in support of the new building, new program in total.
Yeah, we all went over.
Over the next four years.
Groundbreaking. Yeah, that's awesome.
Amazing.
Great.
All right, well.
I'll let you do it.
Okay. Might as well finish it out. All right. County Commissioners' Resolutions, twenty-three dash seventeen sixty-eight, appoint Jack Coons to serve on the Montgomery County Planning Commission for a three-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Seventeen sixty-nine, appoint Karen Bradley to the Law Library Resources Board for a five-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. Seventeen seventy, reappoint Deborah Feldman and Doug McGary, Representatives at Large to the Family and Children First Council, FCFC, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Seventeen seventy-one, reappoint Doug Compton, Representative at Large, to the Family and Children First Council, FCFC, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Seventeen seventy-two, elect Commissioner Debbie Lieberman to serve as President of the Board of County Commissioners for the year two thousand twenty-four. Seventeen seventy-three, set the dates and times for all regular session meetings of the Montgomery County Board of County Commissioners for the year two thousand twenty-four. Seventeen seventy-four, appoint, designate, County Commissioners and/or their designees to serve on various boards and committees for a one-year term.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 You know, this is another group, I'll take myself out of it. This is another group that, you know, they volunteer to be on our boards and commissions, and I have to single out Deborah Feldman, our former administrator. You know, she came and spoke to a group of our leadership, women in leadership last week, and it's just amazing the things that she still does for the county quietly, you know, she serves on FCFC, she, you know, drawing a blank, Carolyn.
Well, I mean, she just, she's just taking her advocate, she didn't, she remains involved, and she's taken her advocacy to another level in a different position where she can really make changes.
I remember what it is. It's a big one for us, preschool promise, you know.
Yes.
She doesn't have to do all these things.
Dolly Parton imagination.
A Dolly Parton imagination.
It goes on and on.
She, she's still so connected to the county, and I just want to thank her. She lost both her.
Mother-in-law.
Mother-in-law and her father-in-law in the last month, so.
Yeah, very tragic.
Yeah, we just, we still appreciate everything Deb does.
Okay, did we vote? I can't remember.
I think we.
We did vote, thank you. All right. Comments by citizens. We have one individual for the final meeting of the year, Mr. Feaster. I think you know how this all works.
I know how this all works.
Right.
He's walking out the sun.
I'm gonna wait while one just in, you know? Y'all know me, man.
Okay.
Y'all know Willie. Mr. You, black woman. I'm upset, man, you know? It ain't about how many dogs I got. Don't make a difference if I had ten dogs, but I don't have ten dogs. Well, Willie, you got, but I don't. But if I did have that many dogs, what difference would it make? Some people got five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten dogs. When you leave here today, where are you going to? A house full of love and all that, man. When you leave here today, where are you going to? You surrounded by all kind of love, companionship. When you leave here today, you not going to no isolation. You surr-. But you, black man, you black. Yeah, you grown, you can duck any dog you want to dog. You grown, you can do that. But when you come in here and you snatch that dog up like that and say, "I'm taking that," I'll take that personal, woman. You surrounded by all kind of love for Christmas, and you are. You not gonna be sitting somewhere lonely. You gonna be surrounded by loved ones, daughters, kids, everything. What is Willie Feaster gonna be doing? Why you around all that? What is Willie gonna be doing? Sitting somewhere in isolation, why you happy? Then you gonna bring your, snatch him up like that. You deserve that, bro. You deserve that. You deserve that, man. You deserve that, Gary. You deserve that, black woman.
Willie?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything pertinent to the agenda that was read today?
Yeah, you deserve that. You deserve that, man. You deserve that, you know? Hope you be happy. Hope you be happy, man. Hope you have a nice Christmas, New Years, and all of that. But you better think about other human beings, not only yourself. You think about other human beings. Somebody ain't gonna be happy. You heard what I said last week? You heard what I said, whether you were here or not. Some human being, this city is not gonna be happy, but you are. You are gonna be happy, but it's gonna be a lot of people walking these streets wherever ain't gonna be happy, but you gonna be happy, but you don't care. You don't care about the next human being. You don't care. But I don't have a dog, Gary. But if I did have a dog, it wouldn't make no difference, Gary. If I had two, or three, four, or five dogs, it wouldn't make a difference. It wouldn't make a difference. How many dogs you got? Some people got many, multiple dogs. Don't make a difference, bro. If that dog can bring me some happiness, if that dog can bring me joy, if a dog, because you ain't gonna do it, a human being ain't gonna do it, but a dog can do it. Yes!
Willie, your time's up.
Dog!
All right. Okay. County Administrator, comments from County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioner. We don't have a meeting here next week, so I wanted to share, there's plenty of time for job seekers out there. Workforce Development is holding an individual hiring event for Economy Linen on January eighth from one to four PM at the Job Center located at eleven eleven Edward C. Moses Boulevard. They'll be hiring for several positions, including maintenance, production supervisor, drivers, and sales. If you need a job, please consider coming to this event.
an individual hiring event for Economy Linen on January eighth from one to four P M. at the Job Center located at eleven eleven C Moses Boulevard. They'll be hiring for several positions, including maintenance, production supervisor, drivers, and sales. If you need a job, please consider coming to this event.
All right. Well. I'm sorry, I'm still thinking about dogs. Last week, it was like we had three events kind of in a row with incredible people in our community. It was first the bikers.
Council clubs, yeah.
Yeah, the council clubs. Then we had Omega Baptist.
With suitcases.
Came with suitcases. And then last week, Doug Mann and his elves from Flock for the Love of Children dropped off gifts for nearly a hundred, or a hundred, a thousand kids that we work with in, in our Children's Services Division. And year after year, it's just wonderful to see the outpouring of love that they give. And Doug and Beth Mann, this is their
Yeah.
mission, for sure.
Is it thirty-some years? That Flock's been around?
Yeah, Flock has been. They were, so, we used to do all the gifts with our cottages up there, Children's Services.
Yeah.
And our staff, our team, Jerry remembers this, really did all the work. But Flock came along and kind of took it over. Thank goodness.
Thank goodness.
Thank goodness, yeah. And they have been supporting us, supporting our kids, year after year. And to see when we were, Carolyn and I are hauling the bags off along with Craig and Michelle and the other team members and then all the Flock people, they just kept coming. I mean, more bags a gift, more. And the thing that's really great is it, it's good for the caseworker because they get the things that the child has told them they, they'd like. And then the caseworker is able to go and, and play Santa with the, the children. And that's really special. I know before COVID, what they would do is Diagroffle Man and Schultz has the Flock building at, over at their building, or the Flock floors.
Tower.
Yeah, the Talbot Tower. And so the caseworker would come in, you could shop. And Judy and I did that several times with them. But now, this is, this is really neat to see because they put the name of the, of the caseworker who it's going to on these big bags, trash bags that they have full of stuff. And, and Flock does other things throughout the year. One of the big things that's so touching and heartwarming is they provide prom dresses for our, our youth that otherwise may not, not just prom dresses, but also stuff for the guys to wear. So Flock for the Love of Children is amazing. As Doug said last week, oh, it'll start on next year tomorrow. They also are able to give to other places throughout the region, not, not just us. So it's, it's really grown. So they, they pull together so many wonderful gifts and I know we'd all like to see the kids' faces light up when they open their presents. But thank you to Flock. Thank you to Children's Services who really have the heavy lifting there, getting those gifts out to the kids and, and playing Santa. So we're thankful for Flock. We're thankful for the council clubs, Omega. Everybody who cares about our children that, that are in our system.
Absolutely.
Well, another event, we were just at the Bring Your Green Luncheon at Sinclair and we presented the two thousand twenty-three Montgomery County Sustainability Awards. The cities of Dayton and Kettering were both recognized for their green initiatives, as were the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission and Five Rivers Metro Parks. Michael Burning, who we all know, who helped start Dayton Regional Green in two thousand seven, you remember that, was also awarded for his commitment to advancing regional sustainability. The two thousand twenty-three Bring Your Green Challenge winners were also announced. Now, these individuals, teams, and organizations earn the most points by tracking their sustainability efforts on the Bring Your Green Challenge online platform, which is bringyourgreen, all one word, dot com. I am proud to announce that Montgomery County took first place in the organization category. So that was pretty special.
Thirteen different teams.
Bring Your Green. Exactly.
I'm sure Lemus will be up to something new for this next year, next round.
Oh, yeah, they're already planning.
All these creative ideas. But I also want to just add on to you, Michael Burning, he was there at the beginning. And, you know, when you think of a, a CEO of a company, at that time especially, who saw
Ahead of his time.
Right. Michael was ahead of his time and he's always been there for us. He's always been at every event with HEB Engineering. But I just want to thank him for being a role model and a leader in this area because it's been great.
It was wonderful.
Yep. Well, congratulations to all the winners.
Absolutely.
And us.
All right. And I also want to mention that this coming Thursday, I'll be participating, as I do every year, in the Homeless Person's Vigil, sadly, at noon at Courthouse Square. And this is held on the first day of winter, which is also the longest night of the year to recognize individuals who have passed away after being homeless. The public is encouraged to attend. It's an open meeting. And we'll be collecting new hats, gloves, and blankets. So please come and it's a somber occasion for sure. But we're all in this together trying to solve this and donate if you can. And I definitely wish everyone a very wonderful and safe holiday season. This is our last commission meeting of the year. I'm standing in for our president, who'll be president again next year. And I, I would extend to all of us here, but all of our employees. This is, whatever your tradition, whatever your circumstance, we hope that you are, you know, happy, healthy, and able to be with those you love at this time. Take care, be safe, be smart. Let us all be determined to have an even better two thousand twenty-four. It is truly a gift, I say this over and over at this time of year, to work with all of you and to work for the people of Montgomery County. Truly a gift.
Totally agree with that one. Thanks to everybody. And, you know, as we look at this next week, we do need to remember that there are people that are suffering for many reasons. And just do your best in being inclusive and friendly and all of the above. And, you know, the Homeless Vigil, Carolyn, is always so emotional when they
Yeah, they always have those, and they ring the bell for each person.
For each person that we've lost in the last
And the empty shoes often along the
So thanks for, for being our representative for homeless.
It's truly my honor. There will be no Montgomery County Commission meetings on Tuesday, December twenty-sixth, or Tuesday, January second. So the next Montgomery County Commission meeting will be held Tuesday, believe it or not, January ninth, two thousand twenty-four at one thirty P M. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved and happy holidays and stay safe and healthy.
Healthy's a good one because this is the time of the year where all getting sick. But merry, merry, happy, happy, everybody, and we'll see you in the new year. Thank you.
Second, we are adjourned. Aye. Thank you.